Good morning, Palm Beach County.
Good morning.
We're going to call this meeting to order. If everyone could, including Representative Roth. If you all could just take your seats. And we will call us to order. My name is Maria Sax. I am Vice Mayor of Palm Beach County Commission. And to my right, who will be assisting us in this meeting is Senator Gail Harrell, who is Chair of the, probably the Legislative Delegation, I would imagine, right? So, today is Monday, October 23rd, 2023. We are beginning the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners and the Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation Joint Workshop. So, if we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing while we observe a moment of silence for those suffering in the Middle East. We have a full agenda today, so my welcoming remarks will be welcome to this joint meeting. We're going to move right along. And Senator Harrell, would you like to have any welcoming remarks at this time?
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. It's a delight to be here, and I want to thank everyone for coming and especially our delegation. If you don't mind, I would like to ask that our members of the House and Senate introduce themselves very briefly, along with their staff, so that everybody knows who is here. And we will, I will start. I am Senator Gail Harrell. I represent District 31, which includes parts of St. Lucie County, all of Martin County, and the northern part of Palm Beach County. And I have with me two of my staff, Karen Sweeney, who handles all policy matters, and Carrie Lyra, who handles all financial matters and budget issues. So, everybody with a budget request, she's the budget guru. And at home in the district, we have Ann Baldock, who handles constituent issues. And I will pass it off. I guess we'll, where shall we start? Right over here. Bye.
Good morning. Thank you, Senator. Good morning, everybody. I'm State Representative Mike Caruso, House District 87, runs from Manalapan all the way up to Jupiter and then west towards the Turnpike. I'm excited to be here today. My Legislative, my District Aid, Eva Saznov is here. She'd stand up. She does all the work in our local office here, which is on 120 Olive, South Olive Avenue. Anybody needs me, call me there. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Waldron.
Hi. I'm Representative Kathryn Waldron. I'm in District 93, which is in Wellington, a portion of Green Acres and the western Lake Worth area. So, thanks. And I would like to also introduce my staff, my District Aid, Rozelle Gibbs, and my new Legislative Aid, Spencer Goito. So, thank you.
Good morning. I'm Kelly Skidmore. I represent District 92 in the Florida House. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. Also with us is Dr. Gwen Gonzalez and Amy Chamberlain, staff in our office. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Joe Casello, District 90. Good morning, everyone. I represent the great cities of Boynton Beach and Delray Beach. Today with us, we have Brian Bees, my Legislative, my District Aid, I'm sorry, my Legislative Aid Troy Grass is on assignment.
Representative Snyder.
Hi. Good morning. My name is John Snyder, representing District 86, which covers Martin County and the northern portion of Palm Beach County. My Legislative Aid Sarah Craven is here. And then, holding the fort down back home is Kathy Thompson. And then, for our Palm Beach constituents, we have an office located in the Town of Jupiter Town Hall. I look forward to hearing from you all this morning. Thank you.
Representative Roth.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Representative Rick Roth. I represent District 94. That's from the Martin County line to Southern Boulevard, west of the Turnpike, going all the way out to Arden, and then all the way out to the Glades. For those who don't know, Belglade is my hometown. My office is on Southern Boulevard, 11903 Southern Boulevard. Just happens to be the Farm Credit Building. Imagine that. I'm a farmer, and I have my office in the Farm Credit Building. Easy to find. Come see me. I have two aides with me here today. I have Will Ponsel, my District Aid for the eastern part, and then Terry Mitzi, my District Aid for the western part. And kudos to Joe Casello. My aide in Tallahassee, Sheila Jackson, is on assignment.
Thank you. And Senator Polsky.
Thank you. Tina Polsky. I represent District 30, which is southern Palm Beach County, south Boca, and the rest is northwest Broward County. I have here Karian Ingram and Shayna Cohen, who are with me in Tallahassee, and Robert Mariage, who is in the district office. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn it back to Vice Mayor Sax to introduce county commissioners. Thank you. I think we have, did David, go right ahead. Sorry, we didn't see you come in.
It's okay. Sorry for my tardiness. I'm David Silvers. I represent House District 89, central Palm Beach County, from southern down to Lantana Road. I just want to, I want to notify, notice that Kristy Fernley, my LA Legislative Aid, and my District Aid, Audrey Pedro, is here. So, you want to stand up and give a bow to everybody? No? Okay. Thanks for having me.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much, Senator Harrell. We're going to move on to Palm Beach County Commissioners. Before I do, I'd like to recognize, really, the engine that makes all of us run on time, and that is our county administrator, Virginia Baker, is here. And next to her is Ed Chase, who also makes sure that we, our trains run on time, Todd Von Laren, who is the train. And I am so sorry, but I cannot see your card from here. And that is Casey, who is Director of our Legislative Affairs. And I know that Vicki Nolan has something to do with this also. So, thank you very much. We're going to start, to my left, with the county commissioners. And we're going to start with Commissioner Mac Bernard.
Good morning. Mac Bernard, County Commissioner for District 7. I have my Chief of Staff, Will Niedemann, who's here. Please stand up. I represent many cities, Delray Beach, Boynton Beach, Hypolexo, Lantana, Lake Worth, the town of Palm Beach, West Palm Beach, Magonier Park, Riviera Beach, Lake Park, Haverhill, and portions of unincorporated Palm Beach County. So, glad to be here.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Mike Barnett, go right ahead.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Good morning, everyone. Michael Barnett, County Commissioner for District 3. I represent the center of our county. We call it the heart of Palm Beach County, which includes the cities of Lake Worth Beach, Green Acres, where I live, and I wanted to acknowledge Commissioner Susie Diaz, I saw in the back, Palm Springs, Lake Clark Shores, Cloud Lake, Glen Ridge, a sliver of West Palm Beach, and unincorporated areas of Palm Beach County. I want to acknowledge two of my Commission assistants, just walked in the room, Laura Hanley, and our newest Commission Assistant, Sasha Lopez. Thank you. Glad to be here.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. And to my right, we have Commissioner Maria Marino.
Thank you, Maria. I am Maria Marino, District 1, north end of the county. I had to write them all down because I always forget one or two. Palm Beach, Palm Beach Gardens, north Palm Beach, Jupiter Inlet Colony, Toquesta, Juneau, Palm Beach Shores, Jupiter, and a portion of Riviera Beach. So, got a lot of that coastline in our, in our district. And I'd like to have my Chief of Staff, Alicia Sanders, stand up and wave. Or not? Yeah, yeah, there you go. And thank you all for being here. Look forward to hearing what everyone has to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Marino. Now, we'd like to hear from Commissioner Marty Woodward.
Yes, good morning. I am Marty Woodward, Palm Beach County, District 4, which is south Palm Beach. And I had to write all mine down, too. I have 13 portions of Boca Raton, Delray Beach, Boynton Beach, Highland Beach, Ocean Ridge, Bryony Breezes, Gulf Stream, Hypolexo, Lantana, Manalapan, Village of Golf, South Palm Beach, and Palm Beach Island, one whole precinct. And I do have two staff members with me here today, Jessica Jansen and Josie Makovic. Take it away.
Good. Thank you. Moving right on to Commissioner Sarah Baxter.
Good morning, everyone. I am Commissioner Sarah Baxter. I'm District 6. I represent all of the western communities of Palm Beach County, mostly Wellington, Royal Palm Beach, the acreage and Loxahatchee areas, along with Loxahatchee Groves, the Glades region. I also represent Belglade, Pahokee, South Bay, and Improvement District, Indian Trails Improvement District. So, I'm happy to be here. My aide that is here with me is Joe LaFauci. Please stand. Regina Bolin is my aide that actually helps me represent the Glades region, and Kyle Drexler would be my other one, on task. So, thank you for being here today, everyone.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Senator Harrell.
Yes, we do have, one of our wonderful centers have just arrived. Senator, would you like to introduce yourself? Bobby Powell.
Thank you, Senator Harrell. I am Bobby Powell Jr., State Senator, representing Senate District 24, which encompasses more of the northern parts of Palm Beach County, starting at PGA Boulevard, heading south to about Hypolexo. We're bordered on some portions by Jog Road, the Turnpike, and even in some areas, I-95. I am here today with my staff. In the audience, you have Attorney Diane Andre, who serves as our Chief of Staff, and our Communications Director and other Legislative Assistant, Mr. Malcolm Summons. I'm extremely happy to be here with you all, reminding you that a life of service is indeed a life that counts, and I'm looking forward to a wonderful opportunity for this delegation hearing between the Board of County Commissioners and us as the Legislative Delegation. Thank you very kindly.
All right. Thank you very much, Senator Powell. We're going to move forward now. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the way we're going to proceed. And in an effort to make this much more conversational, we're going to go through the five categories, and then we're going to open it up at a certain point, because we want to hear from everybody, from the delegation members, who will be leaving soon to do their work in Tallahassee, to those of us in the county, represent the seven districts in the county, for what we would like to see happen on our behalf, Palm Beach County's behalf, in the legislature. So, the five categories is, number one, 2023 Session, Palm Beach County Highlights. We have a Housing and Economic Development, Substance Use and Mental Health, Public Safety and Criminal Justice, Local Government, Environment, and Natural Resources. So, for each one of these categories, we're going to have county staff, as briefly, will explain our legislative initiatives and our goals. Then, we're going to open it up for a conversation among all the commissioners and the delegation members. And this is the time for everyone to get your goals and your initiatives in. We're all here, and we want to hear from everybody. So, for the county commissioners, I don't have to tell you to go into detail about the need for these legislative items. And for members of the Legislative Delegation, we hope you would describe the atmosphere in nice words in Tallahassee, so that we, in the county commission, can understand what it's going to be like to push these legislative, these goals for your county, and how would be the best way for our delegation members to be able to achieve those goals. If anybody has a goal or a priority that has not been mentioned in the five that I have, speak up, and let's see how we can work together to get these goals achieved. We're going to spend 10 to 15 minutes on each category, and then we're going to move through all five, but we're going to leave time at the very end for discussion of other issues. So, we're going to proceed, so we're going to start with some brief county highlights from the 2023 session, and we're going to briefly detail the county's agenda. So, I'd like to welcome Assistant County Administrator Todd Von Laren, Intergovernmental Affairs Director Ed Chase, and Legislative Affairs Director Casey Denny.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, Chair Harrell, members of the delegation and the commission. Great to be here before you today. I also just quickly wanted to point out in the audience today, we've got two additional Assistant County Administrators with us, Mr. Reginald Duran and also Mr. Pat Rutter, in addition to a number of county staff, who are all experts on a lot of the issues that we're going to talk about today. Today's meeting is not intended to be a public hearing, so we're not having public comment, but there will be some times where some of our staff and others will be asked to come up at the seat next to Casey to apply and chime in on a few of those items, and we'll do that as we move along. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was known. Before you, you have a packet. Inside of your packet, you have today's agenda. You have the PowerPoint with you in there, as well as some comments when Al Johnson comes up on some of our substance use and mental health-related issues that we're working on. Also, our two legislative legislative initiatives from the county, both our general government and our environmental agendas, as well as some handouts related to the Lake Worth Lagoon and Lox River. So, I just wanted to share with you what information you had before you. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Ed Chase to just give a few highlights and thank yous to the delegation from some successes that we had last session.
Good morning, delegation members. Good morning, commissioners. Your 2023 legislative session was remarkably busy, but I did want to take a couple of issues and talk about a few things that were very important to Palm Beach County. First of all, Senate Bill 210, Substance Abuse Providers. Once again, we want to thank Senator Harrell and Representative Caruso on handling legislation put forth by the State Attorney's Addiction Recovery Task Force. You both have been our leaders on that issue for a number of years, and I think it's very safe to say that, looking back, Palm Beach County is a much better place because of the legislation you have passed for us and with us. So, we appreciate that. House Bill 269 on Public Notices, Representative Caruso, this is the bill increasing the penalties for intentionally dumping litter on the private property with the purpose of intimidation or threat, and also the display of a projection of an image onto a building without written permission of that. That is a bill that was vigorously supported by our Board of County Commissioners, especially our Chair, our Mayor Greg Weiss. And Representative Caruso, I just wanted to look at you for a minute and say thank you, and maybe if you have a few words about this bill that you wanted to share with us, particularly the very interesting bill signing ceremony that took place for that bill.
Thank you. Yes, I was HB 269, something that I, I guess I initiated maybe five years ago when I got into the Florida House, and it just took a little while and some other bills to lead up to it. But it, it's something that the entire, one of the few bills I've ever seen in my career that was cosponsored by every member of the Florida House and the Florida Senate. And I was proud and excited that that took place and that the overwhelming support by the entire legislature took place. The bill got the attention of the Governor right after it was passed on the House floor, and he called me and Representative Randy Fine to Israel, where he signed the bill in Jerusalem. So, that was an exciting 24 hours there and back in the middle of session. So, you know, we flew over there, signed the bill, and flew back, and it was quite the event. So, very exciting. Thank you for noting it.
Absolutely. House Bill 1123 for Airport Contracts, Representative Gossett Sideman, Representative Casello, thank you for pushing this in the House. This is a bill that the county was looking for that would make adjustments to the current thresholds for contracts that have to be approved by the county commission. So, now, any contract less than $1 million can be approved by the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners on a consent agenda. We affectionately refer to this bill as the Laura Beebe Board Meeting Appearance Reduction Act, and it keeps her at her job at the airports division instead of every meeting at the county commission. Representative Kelly Skidmore, HB 389, allow school districts to make menstrual hygiene project, products available to girls in schools at no cost. That is something that this board has supported over the years, and we appreciate you getting that over the finish line. And finally, Senate Bill 164, Senator Polsky, this would decriminalize the possession of narcotic drug testing products, like fentanyl test strips. Is there, do you have one to say a few words about that process?
Sure. Thank you, Ed. Sometimes we get to do really meaningful things in Tallahassee, and to be able to allow people to purchase these really inexpensive strips to test for fentanyl could really save lives. And I was thrilled with the bipartisan support. It did take a couple of years to get over the finish line, but I'm really glad it did. Unfortunately, I wasn't invited to any bill signings, but that's the way it goes in Tallahassee.
And finally, a bill that wasn't passed last year, but it was passed in 2023, was the Public Notice Bill. And on behalf of Ms. Baker, I just wanted to, and the Board of County Commissioners, I wanted you all to know that on September 12th, the Board of County Commission approved a contract with Civic Plus to operate what would be the county-designated publicly-accessible website for publication of legal notices. So, going forward, Palm Beach County, municipalities in Palm Beach County, special districts, and other local government entities would have the option to enter into a local agreement with the county and put their public notices on that website. So, I just want to report that we have done our due diligence in implementing that program. Some appropriations that we worked on last year with you, I wanted to thank you for, number one, Peanut Island Historic Restoration, $750,000. Representative Caruso, thank you. Senator Powell, we appreciate your work on that. Our, our very popular Restore Reentry Program, fully funded at $500,000. Representative Waldron, thank you for your efforts on that, as well as Senator Berman. Getting over the finish line, finally, was Green Kay Phase 2, a $3 million appropriation. Representative Skidmore, thank you. Senator Polsky, thank you. We had a very good check presentation, odd site a few weeks ago, was very exciting. Don't get to have big check presentations very often, so I think we're, I think we're on to something there. Two very important initiatives for Palm Beach County, well, first of all, the statewide study of community resident zoning. And Senator Harrell, Representative Caruso, thank you. That was appropriation put forth by the State Attorney Addiction Recovery Task Force. So, thank you for getting that over the finish line. Finally, the Loxahatchee River Preservation Initiative is funded at just under $1 million. Senator Harrell, as always, we appreciate you shepherding that initiative in the Senate. In the House, sponsors were Senator John Snyder and one on from Senator Rick Roth. So, we appreciate that work. And then, the Lake Worth Lagoon Initiative had excellent funding at $2.3 million this year. So, Senator Powell, thank you once again for shepherding the initiative through the Senate. And we had a number of House sponsors, Representative Caruso, Representative Edmonds, and Representative Gossett Sideman were all our House sponsors on those. So, you'll see Bonefish Cove separated from that. That was a project within the initiative in the Senate during the back and forth of the very busy times on the last few days of session. Somehow, that got dropped out of the House side and became its own special individual appropriation, but didn't negate the total amount going forward from the Lake Worth Lagoon. So, basically, due to the House's dropping of something and our inability to ever bring that up with them, we have received an extra appropriation for Bonefish Cove. So, we're going to take full credit for that, and thank you very much. A couple of items that were passed, but were regrettably vetoed. Once again, the Central Palm Beach County Historical Infrastructure Improvement Program, $1 million, Representative Silvers. We appreciate your work in trying to help us with that, as well as Senator Berman. Commissioner Barnett, we've had conversations at your request, and we will look forward to, to reapplying for that appropriation, making a few tweaks, and see if we can get that over the finish line this year. Through Palm Tran, our transportation disadvantaged bus passes did pass for $1 million. Representative Silvers, thank you again. Senator Berman, we could not get that through the Governor's Office, so we will, with our Palm Tran governmental affairs staff, tweak that a little bit and see if we can get that through. The Balanced Community Justice Project was a project that emanated from this meeting exactly a year ago. Representative Edmonds, Senator Powell put that appropriation in with the help of our Criminal Justice Commission. Although it was passed, it just did not make it through the Governor's Office. So, again, we'll work with the Criminal Justice Commission and see if we can get that through one more time. And our Glades Region Infrastructure, although we did, were able to get a $1.5 million appropriation, Representative Roth, thank you for your work on the House, we were, once again, not able to get that through the Governor's Office.
Moving on to our 2024 legislative priorities. In Housing and Economic Development, we're going to start with two hot topics going into the 2024 session, beginning with the Live Local Act. Last session, you all passed the Live Local Act to streamline the development of affordable multifamily housing in commercial, industrial, and mixed-use areas. Some counties, like ours, have limited vacant industrial land that's available for use for economic development. Our Business Development Board does a great job of attracting new businesses to relocate to Palm Beach County, but they need the land available to be able to do that. And additionally, there are many scenarios in which industrial areas just aren't suitable for residential use, specifically those around the airport because of noise and other environmental concerns. And therefore, we would support allowing local governments to have discretion in approving these multifamily housing units in certain industrial-zoned areas. In addition, local governments provide density bonuses to transit-oriented developments to encourage housing in specific areas, but to prevent these density bonuses from becoming the new standard under which a local government's boundaries are eligible for developments qualifying under the Live Local Act, we would support exempting TODs from certain requirements under this law. Commissioner Woodward, do you have any other comments on that?
Yes, thank you. I'm on the Tri-Rail Board, and this was brought to my attention from our Miami Commissioner and one of the Broward Commissioners, too. It's not so much an issue for Palm Beach County, but there are several municipalities who had applications in for TODs that have kind of had the brakes pumped on them, just because the concern is, a lot of land around the railroad tracks is considered industrial and commercial, and the concern was the height, going a mile in either direction. They wanted to still do the TODs close to the station, but didn't want to have to, I guess, allow the mile perimeter in either direction. So, it's, if we're asking for the exemption to allow the TOD to be developed, but not then give it the mile, is that explaining it correctly? It's more, it's all municipalities in this area, so we, I don't think we have any of our train stops unincorporated, and the same thing with Broward and Miami-Dade. But the municipalities are very concerned with Live Local, and this has put the brakes on several projects in both of these counties, and I'm sure it's happening in other parts of the state, too. So, we want to have the transit-oriented development, and would appreciate any help that you can do with that.
And lastly, on the issue of Live Local, as you all are aware, Palm Beach County voters approved a $200 million housing bond to provide gap financing for developers to construct more affordable housing units in our county. Commissioner Bernard has run point on this, and I'll throw it over to him to kind of give a little context about the conversations we've been having with Florida Housing Finance Corp. and what we've been doing locally as well.
Thanks, Casey. For us, it's just, what we're trying to do is make sure that we're able to pair some of the dollars that we've allocated for the housing bond, to be able to pair it with some of the tax credit developments that are potentially. So, we'd like to eventually see if we can increase the amount of 9% tax credits that we're able to receive. So, that's kind of like something that we want to work with Florida Housing. Thank you.
Moving on to another hot topic for this coming session, property insurance. Many of you have previously shared that you hear from constituents a lot about this issue. We know that it's an issue here in Palm Beach County. Floridians have been seeing huge increases in their property insurance, and it's contributing to housing unaffordability across the state. We will, we've moved from a monitor position on any legislative proposals to a support position for any proposals that will help provide more predictability in the market and also reduce the costs to consumers. And I know Senator Polsky has filed legislation along these lines. I'm going to pause here and kind of open it up, because these are two major issues for any discussion, but I'll, I'll point over to Senator Polsky if she wants to talk about her legislation recently filed.
Sure. Thank you, Casey. And I'm sure my colleagues, especially I know Rep. Skidmore, have lots of great ideas on things we could do. It certainly, you know, many of us It certainly, you know, many of us were critical of the legislation that was passed, because we thought it focused on just the issue of litigation and not the broader issue. And also, it's going to take a very long time for the rates to come down, and there's no guarantee of when that is, and there still is not. So, you know, we try to come up with practical, specific proposals that we think might help. So the one that I proposed last year as an amendment, which was not taken up in the bill, but I'm proposing it again as a, last year's a standalone bill, and this year again, is about mandatory mediation for claims, property insurance claims, before they go to litigation. If the concern is that there's too much litigation, about 25% of the claims do get settled in mediation. So think about losing, you know, that many thousands of cases that we won't need in litigation and saving those costs to everyone involved. So it's something that I do as my work. I'm a mediator, and I work on these cases, as well as other kinds of commercial litigation cases. And so I really see the need for making sure that these cases go through mediation. And not only do you have the opportunity to settle, but sometimes if you don't settle, you still get all the parties to the table. You get the insurance company to finally get the right desk adjuster to pay attention to the customer and provide documentation. And I've seen many times where there's been miscommunication, and just having that mediation, even if it doesn't resolve it, moves the ball along to say, okay, we're going to send out another inspector. We're going to do this, we're going to do that. Many times, I'm sure your constituents all complain, they can't get a hold of someone at the insurance company. So this forces them to the table to face each other and discuss the issues, and maybe it resolves, maybe it doesn't, but at least we're trying to move the ball forward. So that's, you know, one idea, and I'm sure my colleagues have other great ideas.
Thank you so much, Senator Polsky. I'm going to refer now to Senator Gil Harrell, Chair.
Okay, if there are any other representatives or senators who would like to come, and I see Representative Roth has his card up. You're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Senator Polsky, for that explanation, and thank you for the work you do in mediation. I actually have been involved in mediation. It's, you're right, it does, it does often save money. Is there anything that the legislature could do, maybe an idea of, instead of mandating mediation, incentivize mediation? Because there's something we can do to, you know, to encourage people to mediate, because maybe, maybe we can do mandatory, but if we can't do mandatory, well, what could we do?
Go right ahead, Senator Polsky.
Thank you, Madam Chairs over there. So many of the cases do go through mediation. That's the process I'm a part of, through the Department of Financial Services. It's very inexpensive. The insurance company only pays like $350. Pretty sad for me. But anyway, they, so many cases do. I've asked the agencies, how many cases do go to mediation out of those that are litigated? And they can't get that figure, because there's no way to track exactly which cases go to litigation. So I can't kind of see the, you know, the amount of cases we're missing out on for mediation, if that makes sense. Once it goes to a judge, if it's assigned, many times those judges do require mediation or suggest it. Many times, one of the parties suggests it. The way the system is currently set up through DFS is that any, either side, the insurance company or the consumer, can request the mediation. So certainly, the incentive is there on the part of the consumer, because they don't have to pay anything. No matter what happens, even if the mediation gets canceled, like they settle on their own, they still have to pay, the insurance company has to pay. So there's no reason for the consumer kind of not to do it, and many of the insurance companies are the ones who are requesting as well. So I don't have an exact answer, but I do know that so many cases do get, do get mediated. It's just there's no way to know how many we're missing.
Does anyone else have any comment or question on where to go with this? Okay. All right, Commissioner Marino.
Thank you. This was brought up at our last board meeting, and while I know policy rate caps are not something we are, we can do, and we don't want to do that, because we don't want to discourage new policy writers, we have to find how we can get rid of the good, the bad actors, because that's what causes the rates to go up. And again, anything we can do in this property insurance, it is something that really is keeping people out of homes, because the, I know that mine went up 50% just this year, and that was even with me raising some of my deductibles and taking some coverage off of items in my home. So anything that we can do to get rid of the bad actors, to keep from lawsuits, to keep from bad adjusters being out there and trying to hose the insurance companies, we need to do that. So you have our support for that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see one more. Let me just make a comment first before I recognize Senator Pell. We are having a special session that is going to take place, and one of the issues that is going to be discussed is expanding the safe home dollars that we put in to assist people in doing the repairs and doing the windows and roofs and things of that sort to reduce insurance. So we're going to be looking at that during special session, in expanding that and putting increased dollars into it. It's my understanding that we've expended every dollar thus far for this year, and we will be looking for further addition to that pool of dollars to assist homeowners in repairing, in improving their homes, making them more storm-worthy. Senator Pell, you had comments.
Thank you, Senator Harrell. To piggyback off of what Commissioner Marino said with regard to caps, that's an issue. You know, I have proposed in the past to either keep it stagnant in terms of rate raises or cap it at a 5% increase. As you indicated, you've seen a 50% increase, but I think it would be political malpractice if I did not mention while being here that Citizens Insurance is going through what they call depopulation right now. And as such, you have to, the legislature passed legislation, which I voted against in terms of that last bill, where you have to opt, I think, opt in as opposed to being able to opt out. So if you're in Citizens now, they're going to kick you out. If you get a letter stating that your insurance price, or they found a different company you can go to, you would have to now tell Citizens, we're going to stay in if that insurance price is higher than 20%. And I want to make sure that people understand they're sending letters. Look at the letter. If that is higher than 20%, you can opt back in to Citizens, but if you do not respond, if it's 50%, some companies have been as high as 75% increases, higher than Citizens, they're going to kick you out to that new company. And what will end up being a result of that is people will be losing their homes, because they've been pushed out of Citizens. So be aware of that.
Increase their rates by 11%.
And Citizens has increased their rates, but make sure that that rate increase is not 20% higher than what they're offering you for one of the private insurers, because people are really losing their homes here. We deal with a lot of issues in Tallahassee, but the one issue that we are facing, all of us, Democrat, Republican, I guess that's all we got, Democrats and Republicans, but all of us are dealing with that in our offices. So make sure that you warn your constituents that if you get an increase of 75% in terms of a private insurer, please call Citizens and tell them that you want to stay in Citizens, because they will opt you out. Thank you.
Thank you for that, for those comments, Senator Pell. And people do need to be aware that they do have the option. If, only if it is increased over 20%, can you opt back in. But you will get that letter. I got the letter, and in fact, fortunately, I shopped. I would advise people to shop insurance. I actually reduced my insurance by shopping. So if you're, if you get that letter, make sure that you do contact your agent and go forward and shop it, because there are reductions happening.
Thank you so much, Senator Harrell. And I, to our delegation, to our legislative delegation, let me tell you, let me say this. This is probably one of the most vital issues that we are facing in the County Commission is insurance. We can't fix it, you can, or hopefully can. I really, and we talk about bad actors. One of the bad actors that has always been sort of blamed for high insurance rates is plaintiffs' PI lawyers or plaintiffs' lawyers when it comes to insurance claims. So I think that Senator Tina Polsky's bill is excellent, because it sort of takes away the wind under the sails for those plaintiffs' lawyers and gives the parties an opportunity for mediation. Senator Polsky, do you have a House sponsor for your bill yet?
Not yet.
Well, I encourage someone, and maybe from Palm Beach, to sponsor that bill, because you, as a mediator, know about it, and you can speak to it. And this would really be a way that, we don't really look at the insurance companies in a bad light, but we look at them as a way to come in and mediate and try to figure out how we can best make this happen. So I encourage that. I would also welcome any legislator to put out a, what we did when Citizens Insurance first came with Governor Charlie Crist, they raised his insurance rates for his mom and dad, so he invited Citizens in. So if we have rising insurance rates, Senator Harrell, then maybe we need to, and I would welcome to help you from the County Commission, a, an insurance seminar, summit. We bring down some of these, certainly Jimmy Patronas and the, I had Barry Gilwell, CEO of Citizens, come down in Palm Beach County, and we sat down with homeowners, and they brought their insurance papers, and we worked on them right there. And the CEOs were not allowed to leave until every property owner was able to work through their insurance issues. This is a big deal. So I welcome our legislators, and I really commit to you, anything that we can do on behalf of the County Commission to assist you in getting this solved would be a tremendous help. Okay, so I think we're going to turn it now over back to Casey.
Moving on, we have a few other Housing and Economic Development issues. Palm Beach County supports continued funding for the Florida Job Growth Grant Fund, as well as the enhancement of the Rural Jobs Tax Credit to further incentivize existing businesses to expand and new businesses to locate themselves in one of the qualified areas. Those areas in Palm Beach County include Belle Glade, South Bay, and Pohokee. We also continue to support full funding for Visit Florida and the removal of the agency's Sunset provision. There was legislation in the House last year on this issue, and we're making it very clear to you all that we support full funding of the State Stories and Marketing Agency here today. In addition, there are some Glades Regional Initiatives that we would like to support, including improvements to existing affordable housing units and the development of new units, the mitigation of muck soils that result in construction premiums with buildings, affordable housing, infrastructure, and roads, as well as eligibility changes to what is colloquially referred to as the Everglades Workforce Training Program, to focus awards in the Glades Region and to increase access for the residents in that region for these Any further comments before we move on?
See none? Okay, go right ahead.
Great. Moving on to substance use and mental health, we have Al Johnson from the State Attorney's Office. He's going to come up here in a minute, and you all can ask questions of him. Palm Beach County, as always, will support the State Attorney Addiction Recovery Task Force legislative recommendations. They're listed here on this slide, and I'll invite him up in just a minute. And then Palm Beach County also supports increased funding for our region's managing entity, the Southeast Florida Behavioral Health Network, as well as funding for additional beds and treatment programs with a focus on youth services and expectant mothers, along with funding for trauma-informed care, education, and treatment. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Al Johnson?
You're lucky today, Mr. Johnson, I tell you.
I do have some questions. And if you don't mind, I would very much like to, to hear, and I don't know if Mr. Johnson, and we've worked so closely together for so many years, we have a tremendous amount of dollars coming into Palm Beach County with the settlement dollars from the opioid case. And there are, our larger counties are receiving those dollars directly. And I know the delegation is concerned about making sure these dollars are best used to really ameliorate the situation. If you can kind of give us just two seconds update and whatever information you have, or perhaps we come back and get us a detailed explanation of what the plan is moving forward, because these dollars are coming down right now.
Thank you, Senator Harrell. And thank you, the delegation, my friends, and everybody from the County Commission for having me here. I don't have any answers for you today. Commissioner Baxter had asked me if I could find out how many dollars are coming to the managing entity in our area, how many dollars are coming directly to Palm Beach County. It's amazing that everybody here has no idea. I know that the Commission is still holding hearings that was appointed by the legislator, legislature, and the governor, and that has not, that has not been completed. But I will do some homework, and I'm not going to be at the November 1st meeting, but I'll let Dave know what information I have, if any, because it's kind of like a closely guarded secret. And, but I'll shake some trees, see if I can find out.
Thank you very much. I think we are very interested. I have to make a comment, though, that Palm Beach County has been recognized with the core element that is within that settlement that says a certain number of dollars must be spent in that, and that came right out of what Palm Beach County has done and what the task force has done in Palm Beach County has really set the standard for the state of Florida. So I do want to say thank you and to State, to State Attorney Dave Ehrenberg for his hard work and what Palm Beach County has been truly a leader in this issue.
Thank you, Senator Harrell. I will pass the message along to Dave, and I thank you personally.
Madam Chair.
Any other que, oh, yes, we do. All right, well, I'll tell you what. Go with Representative, and then I'll go with the Commissioner.
Yes, you're recognized, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. I thought that we had passed a bill through Attorney General Ashley Moody's office to establish a task force in order to determine how the money gets split up. I think that task force was just enacted on, as of July 1st, so.
Correct.
May have to wait until.
Yeah, they are meeting, they're not finished. They've had, I believe, several meetings, and they have several more to go. That shouldn't affect how, what the amount is that's coming in, it's the allocation of where they want to put it. So let me find out what I can, if there's any information.
Great.
If you are correct.
Yes, I think this would be very helpful to report back to the Commission as well, because these are, Palm Beach County Commission should have a say in those dollars, because they're coming directly to the Commission.
Of course, my first call is going to be to John Hewlock, to find out if he knows anything, because he's, he's the drug czar for the county. So we'll, we'll, we'll find out what we can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Sarah Baxter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I wanted to thank Al for bringing this to our attention. For those of you that don't know, this is a topic that affects me very personally, having lost two sisters to addiction. So I just was very grateful to Al and would really be interested to find out all the information that we had previously discussed. So please.
Excellent.
If you get that.
Excellent. And you will, Al, thank you, Commissioner Baxter. You will, of course, send a copy to the Chair, the delegation, and the Mayor Weiss of the, of our legislators and our Commission. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Ford? Okay, you are excused. Thank you. All right.
All right. We'll move right on.
Moving right along, go right ahead, Casey.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Moving along to Health and Human Services, a few issues here. First and foremost, Palm Beach County will support legislation that increases transparency for existing guardianships in Florida to protect wards from fraud and abuse. This was added to our legislative agenda last year at the prompting of Commissioner Woodward, and there's actually been a few bills that we've already seen pop up that we're looking into right now on this issue. Second, and a new addition to our agenda this session, is the establishment of a Hispanic Cultural Resource Community Center to meet critical needs in our community, and I'm going to send that over to Commissioner Barnett, who's been particularly passionate about this project.
Very good. You are recognized, Commissioner Barnett.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Casey. Yes, Hispanic Cultural Resources Community Center, we're actually going to be hosting a roundtable, our first of a series of panels, this afternoon at 2:00 at the Palm Springs City Government Center, courtesy of Mayor Beverly Smith. This is something that's been brought to my attention from the moment I was appointed. This is a need that's been crying out from the Hispanic leadership, a physical brick-and-mortar resource center to address and acknowledge the Hispanic. to address and acknowledge the Hispanic, growing Hispanic population in my district and across Palm Beach County. We're kind of frequently overlooked by the larger Miami-Dade-Broward County Hispanic populations. But we need a place for our own, for our community here that can help assist so many local agencies in providing resources, but also educate and support those who are making the focus of Palm Beach County or acknowledging the focus of Palm Beach County's Hispanic community. Very excited about this. And I appreciate all the legislators who have had a chance to meet with and speak to about this, who've expressed enthusiasm and support. And I'm grateful for my colleagues on the County Commission for making this a priority and part of our legislative agenda. Thank you very much, Casey, Todd, and Ed, and Ms. Baker.
Thank you so much. Barnett, anybody else has anything to say about this? All right, moving forward, go right ahead, Casey.
With regard to transportation disadvantaged funding, we will continue to support any attempts to increase funding to the TD program, as well as an appropriation you saw mentioned in the previous slide that we've sought, that was vetoed, that would help offset our local contribution that we make into the program above and beyond what is required of us from the state. With regard to autopsy reports, often these reports include private confidential medical information, medical history, and other information regarding an individual's life. To protect individual HIPAA rights and to protect their loved ones, we would support a public records exemption for these reports.
Very good, thank you.
Lastly.
Hold on just one second, Casey. We have a question.
Yes, is someone sponsoring that? Do you know who is doing that?
I'm not aware of anybody sponsoring that bill at this time. So if that's something you're interested in, Senator, I'm happy to talk to you about that.
Yes, please do.
Great. And another new addition?
Just want to say something. I know that, and I'm talking also to you, Chair. Commissioner Baxter brought up before, during one of our meetings, at what time does the county and the authorities find out when someone is deceased, so that our role on, so that the role of voters' registration is determined to be up to date? And I wonder if we could also include this in that request so that we know exactly when someone is deceased, so that I know Social Security is immediately notified and the VA, but also our services for voter registration? And if that could be included in that, I would appreciate it. On behalf of Commissioner Baxter.
Thank you.
Move it around. Go right ahead. Representative Skidmore.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment while we're under Health and Human Services, but not specifically to the autopsy bullet. And I wanted to ask the County Commission where we are with the healthcare district appointee, if there has been someone appointed. I know that there was a vacancy. And the reason I'm asking is because the healthcare district is moving from grant process, a grant program, to a fee-for-service program. And there are many grant recipients in the county who will no longer be able to accept those grants for a variety of reasons. And I'm concerned about the gap that that is going to create. So just want to say that, kind of on the record, we need to be paying attention to this big change that the healthcare district is proposing, and maybe have a presentation on it so we all understand it.
All right, thank you very much. Any other, any other comments? Very good. Let's go right ahead, Casey, continue. Thank you.
The last item in the Health and Human Services section is a new item. Palm Beach County would like to work with the Department of Health for specific building repair needs. Specifically, the building on 45th Street has a roof that's prone to leaking and is at the end of its life, needs to be replaced. We all are aware of the necessity of strong roofs during hurricane season in this section of the state. So we want to work with the Department of Health on that request, as well as repairs for our Clematis Street location, which needs some sealant and has some HVAC needs. We're also constructing a new building at the South County Complex redevelopment. In that project, for the Department of Health, we've had several discussions with them on their needs for the new facility and would like to work with the state on some cost sharing for that facility as well.
Public Safety and Criminal Justice, Todd, you're on.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Just wanted to share with you a few issues as we shift to public safety and criminal justice and some successes that we've had. We spoke about reentry for our nonviolent offenders earlier on. And we've had some great success in our appropriations over quite a period of time, you know, about five or six years in getting some of those appropriations. And I know that Representative Snyder was particularly helpful last year. We again are going to come back for another half a million-dollar request to the Legislature, working with our delegation members. But one thing I would just ask you to look at in that particular area, because of the track record we've had in that, that if there's an opportunity to potentially move that to a recurring source for that program, I can tell you that as a baseline in Palm Beach County for recidivism of reentry, it's about 58% over a two-year period that we looked at. For the individuals that participated in our reentry program here, that percentage was about 26%. So we've been really able to get in there with some of the case management work we've done. We've shown some great results, and we look forward to diving into that in a little more detail with all of you as this session begins, but particularly with Chair Snyder, Representative Waldron, and also with Senator Berman. And we want to thank you for being champions of this issue. And we're telling you that it's working here. And we would really like to be able to continue that over the long term. So that's a real request that we want to look at in that perspective. The issue of veterinary telemedicine, probably one of the most talked-about issues in Palm Beach County over the last few months is overcrowding in our kennels. And so as we approach the holidays, if anyone is looking for a pet, we have plenty for you to adopt, so please come on down. But one thing we find is that the cost of those animals is very expensive. And so a lot of people took advantage of opportunities for telemedicine during the pandemic. And when that went away, for folks that were maybe on a lower-income scale, it became a little out of reach to make sure that they had some of the needs taken care of for their pets. There were two bills last year and last session that were pending. Buchanan, Representative Buchanan sponsored the House bill, which passed unanimously through the House. Representatives Gruters, our Senators Gruters and Engolia sponsored the Senate bill. We know that that bill will be back again this year, and we ask you to please take a look at that. It will really help us get pets into hands and save some money for some of our folks who are interested in adopting.
Okay.
The Juvenile Detention Center replacement, this is something that we've been working at for quite some time with DJJ. We were successful in getting some dollars in the department budget last year with three different facilities for replacement, ours, Browards, and Hillsborough County. Again, DJJ will be coming back again to continue some of those. So we will be keeping our eye on DJJ budget, and we'll share with you as we go through the process of where that is and if it needs any additional help from you as we move forward. So I wanted to point that particular item out. On the COPCN preemption, this is when it comes to ambulance service and having some local control of making sure that those providers that provide that service are ones that when you call them, they're going to be there, that financially, they're able to do that, that their response rates are well. That process has worked very well for us here at the local level. And we just ask that in a host of preemption issues that come about, that that is one that you keep a watchful eye on. And we'd be happy to share more information with you as session goes as we see this particular preemption, if it appears, or any others, that we can share with you what we're doing locally and why we think some of those things we're working on are particularly good. So wanted to share that item. And then finally, the Judicial Circuit Assessment Committee. That is a committee that the Governor has put together through the Supreme Court. And locally, Judge Justice Gerber from the Fourth DCA is the Chair of that committee. Our chief judge sits on that committee as well. We've listened to a lot of public comment on that, and they are still in that process. But I can tell you that locally, our Criminal Justice Commission has recently submitted some pretty strong comments to the Chair and that committee about concerns they have with that realignment of judicial circuits throughout the state. I know that Commissioner Barnett is serving on CJC and has been very engaged in that conversation. The county is continuing to monitor that issue and see what happens with recommendations that come out and what the Legislature might ultimately do. So I'll yield back to the Vice Mayor. I know there might be some comments on a few of those items.
Do we have any? I see, I see a comment right there. Any others? Very good, all right, Senator Harrell.
Representative Caruso, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Assistant Administrator Bonlaren, if I could digress, go back to the Florida Department of Health, the roof, the air conditioner, that sort of thing. Is that something that the Department of Health needs to be nudged in terms of, you know, appropriating those funds? Or do we need to go to the state Legislature's budget proposal and do an appropriation?
I would say that it's a twofold strategy. So when you're at that fork there, I think there's some nudging to be done. But also, if we're going to move up some of those repairs a little earlier that we think need to happen, and, you know, we've worked very closely with the Department of Health on this issue. There's just, in some of those facilities, they don't have as robust of a maintenance plan in place for those. And we've seen where, at least on two of those occasions, the 45th Street and the Clematis Street ones have fallen behind a little bit. So first, I think, maybe a nudge from the Department of Health to just kind of give you an idea of where they might be in their strategy for repairs on that, and if not, if there's a way to move it up. The third one, the South County Capitol redevelopment, that would be a total rebuild that we are looking right now at the Board of a redevelopment of our South County complex, our South County government complex, which includes the Florida Department of Health within that. So if we're going to be able to move forward on that, their partnership is key on the financial side with that. And that might take a little bit longer to get through than maybe some of the initial repairs on the 45th and the Clematis Street ones in terms of what it might cost to build a new building versus do some of the repairs on the other two. Follow-up, Madam Chair.
Follow-up.
Thank you. Great. Could you provide the specifics, the addresses, the names of the facilities, so that we can, you know, maybe we could draft a letter, you know, to the Department of Health to encourage them to make these buildings right?
We can do that. We have the addresses, we have the actual dollar amounts that we believe it will take to do those repairs and the specifics of those repairs. We'll get that to you today.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other further comment from members?
Now I see we have Commissioner Marino.
Thank you. And this will come as no surprise, since I brought it up in our meeting. So thank you, Todd, for your clarification on the South County complex. What started off to be an expensive project has now become astronomically expensive. And a good portion of that is a new building for the Department of Health. I have already said that I think the Department of Health needs to make sure that they are part of the equation, a large part of the equation, because they don't, otherwise, then we should be repairing the building and not reconstructing. So I'm just putting it out there again. Department of Health needs to understand that, you know, we need some help down here, and there needs to be some clarification of what is their responsibility and what our responsibility is. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Marino. Commissioner Barnett?
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Can we go back to public safety and criminal justice, please? Thank you, Todd. I do serve as Chair of the Public Safety Coordinating Council. I wanted to mention a few of those bullet points. Reentry for nonviolent offenders, yeah, thank you very much, Representative Snyder and the other representatives for approving that 2023 appropriation. And yes, I was in a way that we'll be making an effort to request a reoccurring appropriation of $500,000 per year? Yes, I'm fully in support of that. Thank you very much. Had a family member. I got to imagine so many of these issues are personal for many of us in this room, including the drug and substance abuse issues, which is one of the reasons why I was enthusiastic about becoming a Commissioner and making some positive differences. I also wanted to address the Judicial Circuit Assessment Committee. Can we talk a little bit about why this is such a bad idea? I believe you mentioned, Todd, that the CJC, which I'd also serve on, has come up with a letter against this proposal. And we're currently drafting, or considering drafting, a letter from the Board of County Commissioners also advocating that this measure fail. Palm Beach County is its own circuit, right, the 15th Circuit? And we would be merging ourselves with either the Broward County Circuit, the 17th Circuit, or those counties north of us, diluting our resources and further burdening our constitutional officers, the state attorney, the public defender, and the sheriff, I'm imagining. Can you talk a little bit about why we should be against this? If, for those who may not be aware of what's going on with the Circuit consolidation move?
Madam Vice Mayor, Commissioner, so specific to some of those requests, and I'll actually quote from the CJC's report and comments that they provided, specifically to the 15th Circuit, one of the things that they had concerns about were obviously funding constraints, staffing and workload shortages, some changing technological requirements, need for facility updates, and some continuous population growth that we see here. And when you have backlog of cases with not enough staff to handle that and continuing to need to do some facility and technology upgrades, you can imagine that by adding in additional circuits, whether it be the 19th or the 17th, could impact that. On the facility side, particularly to the county, one thing that we're going to be keenly watching is what is that financial impact potentially on local governments for facility upgrades if our facility, our courthouse, becomes the seat for multiple counties outside of our jurisdiction? So those are some of the specific reasons that they've quoted as part of that, as well as a number that we've got in here as well. We'd be happy to forward the CJC's comments to the delegation as well so you can see what has been submitted to the committee for consideration.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I would recognize Senator Polsky for some comments.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor had said at the beginning of this, let's talk about how we can get things done in a practical manner. So I guess I'm asking us as a group, both the Commission and the delegation, you know, if Palm Beach County is against this judicial redistricting, which, you know, so many folks from across, you know, completely bipartisan, I don't think anyone spoke at the last meeting that they had that was in favor of it. And so we know, let's just be very honest, what the structure is of the Florida Legislature. We know if it's something that they want to get through, they can get through. And so I guess I'm asking maybe my Republican colleagues or, you know, the Commission, what can we do to stop this? It's going to hurt our county, and we have to stop this from happening. But, you know, from where I sit, the super minority is quite hard. I'll fight all that I can, I'll take every amendment, I'll take every question and every talking point to the floor. But, you know, what can we do to stop something that, you know, is so basically vilified by the whole state?
May I respond, Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Let me ask you something. I am sure that every member of this legislative delegation is opposed to this because it is not good for the people of Palm Beach County. And in my years there in a minority position, there are some issues that surpass minority-majority. They are issues of justice for the people of the county. And I would ask the members of this delegation to review which groups you have working with you. Do you have the Florida bar? Do you have a lobbying group with the Florida Supreme Court? Do we have attorneys and bar associations from other counties that maybe have a stronger voice possibly than we? Although I have to say, I think our Palm Beach County bar is very strong. And I remember the days when they wanted to split the court and remove the Supreme Court from the city of Tallahassee and move it out to the suburbs. And we had everybody in a full-court press, past presidents of the bar. So I would just encourage you, Senator Polsky, and the members of our delegation, to partner with large lobbying groups. The Chamber of Commerce, big voice. AIF, big voice in Tallahassee. This is not good for business. It's not good for our justice, and it's certainly not good for the people of Palm Beach County. So we will support you, I mean, at least I will. I can't speak on behalf of our. I can't speak on behalf of our county commission. But I'll tell you what, we've got some very powerful partners in the state of Florida that will stand with you in lobbying against this very bad idea. So I would just encourage all of you in this delegation to partner with those that I have mentioned, such as the Florida Chamber, AIF, business organizations, because they certainly cannot be in support of it. And that helps. The bigger the team that you have, the louder your voice will be, and you can actually get something done. Not a lot, but you can get something done. This is an egregious movement, and I think that with that, and I'd be more than happy to talk to anybody afterwards about connecting with some of these organizations. But thank you, Senator Polsky.
And I recognize Representative Roth for comment.
Thank you. This is a tough question, but I think it has to be asked. What are we doing as the Palm Beach County Commissioners or staff or government in Palm Beach County to prepare a letter or data showing, you know, that efficiency and backlogs and backlogs due to COVID-19 and all kinds of other problems, that this would cause a lot more problems? Do we have something that we could prepare or have prepared?
So, Madam Vice Mayor, those are comments that have individually been submitted by a number of those core stakeholders that Vice Mayor Sacks talked about, the State Attorney's Office, the Public Defender's Office, collectively the CJC. Those are all comments that have been submitted to the committee, and they are deliberating right now and will be putting forward whatever recommendations they might by sometime in December, which is their deadline. And so we'll know how those comments are incorporated into that document that comes out of the committee. And at that time, I think that the Board of County Commissioners and other stakeholders around the state will closely look at that and then provide further opinions about what those recommendations are and what our thoughts are about them.
Thanks. I attended my first meeting of the CJC today, so this letter had already been written. I had two things. One is, in reading the letter, it doesn't actually come out and say strongly that it opposes consolidation. It seems mostly focused on, we don't want to be separate, we want to remain separate. So I think maybe that was a fine line that I wasn't in the discussions that maybe people wanted to present, but it's not as strong as I personally would have liked it. But we talk a lot about everybody who's against it. I don't know anybody who's for it. Maybe somebody here knows which groups are for it? Does anybody?
Well, that takes care of that. That's good. That's why we're here today. That's exactly why we're here today. Okay, very good. I think we have an issue, focused on my lobbying team, our lobbying team. We have an issue that we will probably need to discuss a little further. And if this is something we can do in the county commission, we'll address that in the next couple of weeks before session begins. Okay, moving right along. Go right ahead, Ed.
Moving right along, by virtue of a loss of a football wager, I get the legislative pleasure of discussing impact fees and sovereign immunity with you this morning.
Who did you, who, don't tell me it was against the, no, what?
It was bad last night. So let's talk about impact fees. We kind of grouped these into three sections to try to make it, kind of explain how it works and why this issue might come to you at some point during the session. So in Palm Beach County, voters approved impact fees back in 1998. So for new construction, 17 municipalities collect that impact fee and then remit it to the county. The county's responsibility with those impact fees regards regional road capacity. So not only are we responsible for the roads in the city where those impact fees are collected, we're responsible for regional roads, getting people from the acreage to Jupiter, getting people from Boynton to Boca. So we sort of have a big-picture view of how to get people from place to place in Palm Beach County. Municipalities have involvement in this process. They call Ms. Baker, they talk to their county commissioner. They will send a letter to our, to David Rex, our engineering director, saying, hey, in our city, we'd like this project to move along. The city of Palm Beach Gardens did that back in 2021. They wanted Congress Avenue extension to be part of, the money's used in impact fees to move that project along. It is now in process. So municipalities have say in how roads are being, money's being used with impact fees. Municipalities can also implement their own mobility plans, which is fantastic. We support that. Mobility plans involve bike lanes or golf cart lanes or shuttles, something intra-city within those municipal boundaries. So if a municipality puts into play a mobility plan, then frankly, they are responsible for funding that mobility plan. We've run into a situation in Palm Beach County where certain municipalities have the idea that they will collect county impact fees and basically not remit those to the county. They will hold on to those impact fees and use them for that mobility plan. Well, that's not the law in Palm Beach County. That's going against what the voters asked us to do with regard to regional road capacity. So there may be a bill that comes to you asking for a preemption to change the way that happens in Palm Beach County. When that does, we hope that you would remember our home rule here in Palm Beach County. We would hope that you will remember what the voters asked us to do and how they asked us to spend that money for regional road capacity. And we think our impact fee program has been extremely successful and equitable to all Palm Beach County residents. On sovereign immunity thresholds, currently, the law is $200,000 per person or $300,000 per incident. There have been bills over the past couple of years that have basically taken those caps and tried to eliminate those caps altogether or increase dramatically the amount of those caps. We will say that the $200,000 and $300,000, they have been in place for a long time. It is probably time due for a reasonable increase in those, but removing the cap altogether is untenable for any county in Florida to financially take that hit on. So we would ask either a reasonable increase or maybe a series of reasonable increases that is linked to CPI going forward.
Very good. Any questions by?
Any questions? I would just comment on the impact fees and mobility fees. And I have said this as former Chair of Transportation with 39 cities in, I think it's 39 cities in Palm Beach County and, of course, the county itself. This is a conversation that I absolutely believe should take place between the League of Cities and the Association of Counties. And if you all come to a conclusion, working together and bring us legislation specifically to address the issues on both sides, that I would be happy to sponsor an agreement between cities and counties. So please, let's work together. Let's discuss, let's solve that problem. I hear it, there's lawsuits going on right here in Palm Beach County. So let's, please, come to us so that we don't have this issue again. Please, come to us with legislation that really addresses the problem from the city's perspective and the county's perspective. You all work it out, come to us, and we will do what you agree on.
Thank you very much, Chair. I'll be meeting with you soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from our legislators?
Oh, I think we have, I think we have our boss.
Far from it.
Ms. Baker, go right ahead.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Senator Harrell, again, I want to thank you for working with us on that particular issue. We will continue to work through Florida Association of Counties, working with Florida, with the cities. So we here in Palm Beach County are also looking at a variety of options. We will continue to look at those. When it is time for us to assess our impact fees, we will work with our consultant to kind of look at us overall on maybe a mobility fee. I'm sorry, the intermodal type fee instead of just the mobility fee. So we're going to look at it county-wide, but I do want you to remember, if this comes to you, that Palm Beach County is larger than a couple of states, okay? And so our actual impact, road impact fee, is based on our spine roads. And that is to get us from the very northern portion of the county to the southern portion of the county and throughout, as well as east-west. And so a lot of times when we're talking to our municipalities, they are looking to get people around within a certain segment of the city. That does not necessarily get people from their home to their job. So the impact fees was a way to help offset the burden on our taxpayers because we've got to provide those types of roads. So there is a way that we can work with them to lay it out. They get a portion to run the programs that they need, and then we continue to provide the services that we are charged with provided when it comes to roads. So we'll continue to work with them at the state level, and we will keep you informed on what we're doing with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Baker. There's no other comments? And we're going to, Mr. Chase, are you going to continue along with our priorities here?
We will do that. And Vice Mayor, on this next slide, we just wanted to share a few other items under local govern administration, just to really accentuate, one, the issue of preemption, so particularly on preservation of local preference, vehicle for hire reciprocity. We've done a number of things locally that we think work really well here. So as you're deliberating on issues regarding local preferences of use of, you know, local firms to do work and vehicle for hire reciprocity, we think it's important to kind of keep some of the local eye in consideration. In terms of the public records exemption, county attorneys, administrators, we hope to see that bill again. I know that it went through the legislature this last year, particularly on the county attorneys. And we've had a number of incidents that we can share with you when we head to Tallahassee about some situations with our county attorneys that this would be very helpful if it was in place. So we'll continue to work with you on those examples. And then the pace issue, obviously, we locally think that there are some strong items as far as pace in terms of protections for individuals and consumer protections. And so we're working with the Florida Association of Counties right now on that. We're involved in litigation locally right now because of some disagreements about what some of the industry thinks the legislature did versus what we think our authority is. So just stay tuned with that one. So just wanted to share a few of those items.
Thank you very much, Todd. For environmental and natural resources?
We will invite Deborah Drum, the Department Director for the county's Environmental Resource Management Division.
Excellent. Welcome.
Hi. Good morning, delegation members and commissioners. We have a great collective story on support for environmental and water projects. So I just want to thank you all, every single one of you at this table, for your leadership on this priority. Our appropriations request for our beach and inlet management projects of just over $3.1 million is a collective request on behalf of Palm Beach County and our municipal partners in the county to further our shoreline protection efforts. And we also continue our traditional advocacy in this arena for programmatic funding and beneficial policy that will facilitate our coastal protection work. The next bullet on the Lochahatchee River Preservation Initiative. This initiative has enjoyed tremendous support from our legislative delegation for which we are extremely grateful. And this year's request is just under $775,000 for the three projects that you see listed, which will improve water quality and achieve restoration and support of meeting necessary water flows for the federally designated wild and scenic Lochahatchee River. Similarly, the Lake Worth Lagoon Initiative has identified $906,000 in projects to support continued restoration and protection of Palm Beach County's economically and environmentally significant estuary. And finally, the C-51 reservoir is a request for approximately $70 million to construct and connect previously funded components, namely the cells 12 and 13, to the L-8 Canal and furthering regional water storage, which has benefits to both the Lake Worth Lagoon and to regional water supply. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drum.
As we continue some of the appropriations, we share the next slide, next two slides with you. And I'm not going to go over every one of these projects since we did and thank many of you for your previous successes for us. You'll see a number of these are some repeats that we're going to be coming back to you and the legislature asking for again. But there's a couple of new items that we just wanted to briefly touch on. The first one that you see at the very top, a large dollar amount, $25 million for CR-880 Road Repair Phase 1. Historically, around the state of Florida, the state has built a number of roads that in turn they've turned back over to local governments. And the legislature in response has created some programs to deal with that, mainly the scrap and the scop programs that are to do that. Here in Palm Beach County, we have a very important road that's about 18 miles long in the Glades area that is a major, major artery for the flow of agriculture product from farm to market. It's about a $100 million road to rebuild. And because of the muck that we talk about out there and some of the work that we need to do in engineering and rebuilding, it's a very, very difficult road from an engineering perspective. I know that Commissioner Baxter has been working with a host of interested parties and affected parties, not just locally but statewide, because this road has an incredible, incredible statewide economic impact when it comes to agriculture and the flow of those goods from Palm Beach County to the rest of not only just Florida but through the country. And I know it's a big number, but it's one that we're going to work very aggressively on to try to pursue, not just with our delegation but with members throughout the state who are very familiar with this road, with some of our state associations. And I'll just ask Commissioner Baxter if she has any other comments that she'd like to share.
Thank you, Todd. And you took a lot of what I was going to say away. So moving on, thank you, everyone, for hearing me out. Again, back to the economic impacts of this road. We have farmers, fruits and vegetable growers, that are having to pack their food differently, take different routes, slowing down their abilities to get food to where it needs to go. And I think most of us in the room can agree, food is pretty important. And this has really become a very big state problem for them. So even to the point of Florida fruits and vegetables contacting me and putting it on my radar. So I'm very grateful to them because this has been a huge problem for a very long time. And you say, wow, what road can cost $100 million? A road that needs to be democked and a road that has to have a better foundation. And that's where most of these dollars could add up very quickly. So we're trying to approach this in a phased process. As Todd said, it will be roughly, probably $100 million to completion. But we're trying to get some architectural and design dollars and then Phase 1 so we can get this road on its way. And anyone who hasn't ever been down this road, I highly suggest you go drive it because when I thought bad road, I thought potholes, maybe some missing asphalt. This road is on a whole nother level. It is the waviest, bumpiest, dangerous road. People usually drive on the opposite side of the road who are familiar to avoid the worst sections, but it is astronomically terrible. And when it's impacting our food supply, I would say it's important to everyone to get it repaired. There is another aspect to the economic impact, it's safety impact response times. We have been worried about the ability if farmers get hurt or if people out in the fields get injured. Fire rescue was saying their response times have been terrible. And I was hoping that Keith Wedgeworth, who is our president of the Farm Bureau, would come today, the Western Farm Bureau. Unfortunately, he was unable to make it. But Major Coleman did say he would love to speak to the safety of the road if he's still here. Is Major Coleman around? There he is. If, it's okay with you, Madam Chair, just for a minute?
Just state your name for the record, sir.
Eric Coleman. I'm a major with the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Go right ahead, sir.
Yes, in addition to everything that's been mentioned, it's just important to remember that there's really only two routes in and out of the Glades within Palm Beach County. You have State Road 80 and County Road 880, which some called Old 80. That was the original road. It's 100 years old. If there's a major incident on the new road, State Road 80, then traffic must be diverted to 880. Or if we had to do a mass, you know, exodus out of the Glades, there was a dike breach or other issues. So this is just an important thoroughfare and very important for public safety.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much for appearing today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Baxter. Commissioner McNair?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question in regards to the C-51 Canal with Deb Drum. Can you kind of like give us a project update or are you requesting any funds, any appropriations during this legislative session?
So, yes, there is progress being made with the first couple of phases of that project that all of that work is getting under contract with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. So we are making good progress. The design- The designs and the engineering and the permits are all going well, all in process as well. And this next request is to make some very significant regional connections of the first couple of components of the funding that was received, and to make those connections to the L-8 Canal, which is going to allow for more robust connections hydrologically and for better water supply and improvements to the Lake Worth Lagoon.
And how much is the budget request?
70 million.
Now, I know last session, we received how much?
70. 70 million.
Seven zero.
Seven zero.
Thank you.
Seventy no. Seven no. Thank you. 70 million. Glad we balanced the budget. Go right ahead. Commissioner Bernard, are you done with that?
So just to round out a couple, the final request to just share with you. In West Delray, Regional Park and All Abilities Playground, we've been working very closely with the Vice Mayor on, and we'll be working with Senators Polsky and Representative Skidmore on the continuation of that request. A couple of new ones that we have are our fresh food pilot delivery for some of our at-risk seniors, to get that fresh product directly home to some of our seniors. And on the next slide, again, our restore reentry we talked about, but one that I wanted to point out, our Westgate CRA, and to do some enhanced lighting and safety initiatives in that area, putting up some matching dollars to Westgate's budget. And we'll be looking forward to working with Senator Powell and Representative Silvers on that particular initiative, as well as some of the support items that we had. I just wanted to share real quickly, Field of Dreams, which is the West Jupiter Community Group. That was about an $80,000 request that Senator Powell ushered last year. It was vetoed, but we're going to come back and we're going to be stronger in supporting that. I know that is a major priority for Commissioner Maria Moreno. And then the last one on there is our South Florida Fairgrounds Emergency Shelter. I know that the fairgrounds, the South Florida Fair is preparing, and a $1 million appropriation request that we are happy to support, and Representative Tay Edmonds and Senator Lori Berman will be sponsoring that effort. So we're excited to do what we can to continue to support some of our agriculture needs and emergency management needs. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. If there's no other further comments on that, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our lobbying team. I know you work very, very hard up there, and it's always a heavy lift. But looking around this table, I can see that you're going to be standing on the shoulders of some pretty good, tough people to make sure that our priorities here in Palm Beach County are answered. And thank you very much. Mayor, Chair, Harrell?
I think we have two comments from Senator Powell. He wanted to comment on something or question something.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure, as Mr. Bonlin talked about with the Field for Dreams program, I think last year it was cut, maybe it was too low, so we'll work to push that number up a little bit.
I'm happy to do that.
Representative Roth?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted a clarification, Todd, on what you mentioned about the fresh food delivery pilot program. I'm assuming, and we know how to spell "assume," that this is a Palm Beach County Food Bank appropriation request?
So this is an appropriation that is from our county's Community Services Department, and they'll be working with a host of different partners on that, Food Bank and others, in order to put together some of those fresh food boxes that we can deliver to some of our seniors and get out to them, as opposed to a number of them who've come to a lot of our senior centers to get meals and the like. So it's a pilot that we're looking to test with a number of partners, but led by our Community Services Department.
Thank you. I just want to make a comment, if you don't mind.
You go right. You're recognized.
I've been working with Palm Beach County Food Bank the last year, got them two appropriations last year, and looking forward to having an appropriation. And the reason I asked the question, sir, was that you said it says it's a food delivery pilot program. One of the initiatives I'm going to be proposing as an appropriation, and I need everybody's support, is for the Palm Beach County Food Bank to have a mobile, mobile food bank delivery program, because I have communities like unincorporated Loxahatchee, Belgrade, Bohemian, South Bay, that really don't have food bank facilities. So we're thinking we could do a mobile facility, because one of the problems we have in a lot of these communities is people don't have, everybody doesn't have transportation. So setting up a food bank in Belgrade doesn't really help Bohemian. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you, Chair.
And perhaps you all can work together and do a joint endeavor, so that those, we don't have duplication here.
Yeah, great suggestion. Thank you.
Any further delegation? You're recognized.
Thank you, Senator. Yes, this topic flew past me regarding the needs for the Lift Local Act to be reconfigured regarding airports, and I wanted to let everyone know, I have filed that bill to work with the Palm Beach County Airport and all airports in the state, precluding the Lift Local, so that residential and educational facilities shall not be built within 10,000 feet of a runway. And this is currently filed, and I'll be looking for a Senate sponsor, and we're taking care of it, and also upholding the local authorities' positions to work with the height restrictions in the industrial areas there.
Very good.
So, thank you.
Any further Senators or Representatives' comments?
All right. Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize Commissioner Mike Barnett.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Sacks. And thank you, Representative Roth, for voicing your support for a mobile food bank unit. The food bank is located in my district and can also benefit three in addition to your area. I also want to stress my strong support, and thanks to the delegation for the $1 million for Palm Beach County's central historic infrastructure funding. The $1 million that was approved but vetoed, unfortunately, in the last session, is badly needed for our district, our district's subject-to-sewer programs, sewer, Forest Main Projects in Palm Springs, the lift stations that Green Acres is working on. And again, Commissioner Diaz is here in the room, going to be seeing you to talk about the needs of Palm Beach County's third district, our aging and crumbling infrastructure, badly de is those funds from Tallahassee. And I thank you again for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnett. I'd like to recognize Commissioner Maria Moreno.
Thank you. As for the refrigerated food trucks, I do know that there's several non-pro, several golf courses that have foundations in the north end of the county that have actually funded several of these food trucks. I know the Ballin Isles is going to be funding two in December, so it'll make three that they have funded in the last two years. So maybe if we want to contact some of the nonprofits that, or I should say, the foundations that are doing this, maybe we're stronger together. So just put that out there. Thank you.
Very good idea. Thank you. Any other Commissioner have anything to say? Very good. We are right on time. Well, a little bit over, a little bit over. We are, but we're never out of town to help each other. We'll always have the time to discuss these things. And I just want to note that at the very end of our meeting today, Chair Harrell, we probably are able to get food from one area of the county to the other using those food trucks that you've been talking about, and being able to make sure that people in this county have the most important thing, which is food. And we also discuss the transportation out of the Glades, get the food from the Glades to the rest of the county. So I think that this has been so, so informative, educational, and not only that, but very productive that we're going to get, because we never really get together and talk. And this way, we're able to share our ideas, our priorities, and look at each other straight in the face and say, "This is our county. This is our people, and we need to make sure that we help them in whatever way we can." I don't have, I think I'm about done. What do you say, Chair?
I think we're about to close. I just want to thank all our delegation meeting members for being here, and we appreciate the county commission and your input into our, into where we're going into session. As we go into special session, please know that we are here for you. There are certain issues that will be very helpful to our constituents here in Palm Beach County as we address those. But we unfortunately don't have time to talk about each of our priorities. We are actually 15 minutes over our time slot, and I know they're trying to get us out of here. But I do want to thank everyone for your input. I so appreciate the county commission coming and really talking things through with us. And we are here to represent you. I know I can speak for every one of us. Our door is always open to you. So please, keep us informed, and we are there for you.
Thank you so much, and this meeting is hereby adjourned.
Thank you.